The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now called to order. Councilman Green will give the invocation and Councilman Flurry will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, God, for this day and thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for all that have come today. We actually give us the spirit of Christ that we will carry out this meeting in a Christ like manner and let us do good for the citizens and for this nation. Thank you, God, for every good and perfect gift. Thank you for what you've done. We're going to thank you in advance for what you're going to do in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Place flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Clark, will you call the roll?
Councilman Bradford. Councilwoman Futter. Present. Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Florida.
Here.
Councilman Green.
Here.
And Councilman Holden.
Tomorrow, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Administrative
Conference of October 7, 2019, and the City Council meeting for October 8.
Does the council have any awards or recognition, if things at this time?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any today, but tomorrow, Reverend Dr. William Barber II will be my guest tomorrow.
Administration have any guests or recognition at this time?
Not today.
All right. Mr. Green, will you come forward, Mr. Green? Anyone have anything relative to property standards of Mr. Green?
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized this time, please, sir? Mr. Green, I'll be sending you an email this afternoon after the meeting sometime probably between 4:00, maybe 6:30, I'll send you an email. It could be something like 6:45, somewhere around there. But I'll be sending you an email from a lady that tells me that we have problems in Hyde Park. Hyde Park is in the Kingston Road, the Mansfield area there. If you're not familiar with it, but it's, she alleges that we have a lot of violations out there. I haven't had an opportunity to travel out there this week, but I will be traveling between now and Friday to inspect it myself. But you will be getting correspondence from District E Councilman and I hope that you will respond appropriately.
It'll be good to hear from you.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Mr. Green, I appreciate it.
You don't get to miss me like that, do you, Mr. Green?
No, I don't.
All right, we're here for Mr. Clark and Ms. Jones tomorrow. Ms. Jones, will there be any legislation added tomorrow?
We're not aware of any.
Okay. And we have the following request to speak.
Mr. Tracy Tufts.
I'm Tracy Tufts of 424 Braymore Road, Shreveport, Louisiana. Came to just make some comments in regards to the, I guess, proposed amendment to the 1084 time changes for stores that their primary, excuse me, primary sales are of alcohol. I'm second generation owner of Thrifty Discount Liquor Wine Company and my comments in regards to that would initially be that it would drive people that are getting off of work late at night into bars and restaurants and in turn would increase the likelihood of people that are drinking and driving to close stores earlier. It would only be fair to force nightclubs and bars to shut down at 9:00 PM also in our opinion of making a current store close at 9:00 who's been in business for as long as we have that have been operating at the hours that we currently operate for since 1962. Also, would like to mention that we run security guards in our stores most evenings at all of our Shreveport locations that we do staff. Another comment I want to make in regards to closing the stores early is that if people decided that they didn't want to go to a bar and they wanted to get something from a liquor store, they would simply drive to Bozier and it would just be lost sales tax dollars for the city of Shreveport. We service a lot of customers that get off of work late, whether they work at a casino or wherever it is that they work, that come to our stores and that we service after 9:00 Not to mention that it could potentially drive business to non-locally owned businesses, ones that don't make donations and contributions to the Shreveport community. Our business is financially structured around our current hours of operation in regards to sales projection, excuse me, sales projections, employee incentives, commissions, bonuses, and any of our debt services. We would be forced to leave some employees and pull away from some of our employee incentives as well. So those are my comments in regards to this proposed amendment. Any questions?
All right, Councilman Nicholson. Mr. Tufts, thank you. I don't have any questions for you, but I do want to address my colleagues on the council briefly because this is a matter that has been added to the agenda for introduction of my request. You know, during our last meeting when we approved a liquor store at Gilbert and Kings in my district with a restriction that it be closed at 9:00 PM every night, we did that because we were concerned as a body about the adverse impact that a liquor store in a residential neighborhood would have. And Councilman Bradford spoke very passionately about the fact that for decades, this council has been approving the placement of liquor stores in poor African-American neighborhoods and nobody has complained about that. I think we should have reasonable hours of operation for all packaged liquor stores citywide. I think that the present rule, which allows liquor stores to remain open until 4:00 AM every day of the week, is unreasonable and I think 9:00 PM is a reasonable time to close liquor stores. I recognize that there may be some marginal economic impact on the businesses that sell liquor in this city, but I think those consequences will be minimal and will be outweighed by the fact that we will no longer have liquor stores operating late at night citywide, many of which are located near people's homes. And so that is the reason I have proposed this legislation and I will continue to urge my colleagues to join me in adopting it in two weeks. Thank you. All right, Councilman Butcher.
Mr. Tufts, what are y'all's hours right now? I don't have a clue, to be honest with you.
Most of the Shreveport locations, they close at 10:30 Monday through Thursday and midnight Fridays and Saturdays and 10:30 AM to 7:00 PM on Sundays.
Okay, so we'd be talking about, on weekdays, you'd lose about an hour and a half, right?
That's correct, hour and a half. And then, you know, Fridays and Saturdays, that would be three to four hours later, which tell us would be a pretty significant change, not only because of alcohol sales, but just all of our customer service in general.
This is, like Councilman Nicholson said, this is the first time that we've really even, I didn't even speak to him over the weekend about it when I saw it, so this is the first time that I've seen this. I would say that for everybody involved, that this is a, you know, it's a two reader, so it won't be brought up for vote until November, what's the date, November 12, I believe. So we have time to talk about this a little bit and kind of hash it out, but I agree with what Councilman Nicholson said about, you know, we need to kind of make it equal all the way around, but I'm not quite sure where I stand on this yet, so I appreciate it.
Well, if I might be able to offer any input, and I don't know if this is something I can or can't do, being as though my time has run out, but I have not been following the liquor store opening on Kings Highway very much. I'm not in the business of opposing my competition, that is not what I'm here or want to do. But I do feel like that based on our historic stores that have opened in Shreveport, that we would have never even attempted to open that location nor would we have wanted to. But if we did, I almost feel certain that we certainly would not have been approved to open that location and that's my opinion. We once dealt with a petition against a store and because of that petition, we did not get that store. So, you know, again, I'm here to talk about the change in the hours, I didn't mean to go off on to that, but just off of my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Tufts, may I be recognized?
Well, you got two people on before you, so. Councilman Green?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions for him, so I'll yield to Councilman Flurry. You can come back.
I'm with Councilman Bradford ahead of me.
Yes.
I don't have any questions, I just have a statement.
Okay. It happened, sir, I just walked in, so I just, it came from me with the legislation as well. Whereas, I appreciate Councilman Nicholson, I'm not, I'm not sure where I stand on this, but I want to ask you, what percentage is, what percentage of your business that's done between 9 o'clock and closing time?
I don't have those accurate figures, I found out about this today as well, so I've been running my business all day and sort of ran here to...
What is your business? Who are you with?
I'm with Thrifty Discount Liquor Wine Company, yes, sir.
And all the thrifters are under one ownership of your franchise?
Well, we have one ownership group, yes, sir.
I mean, there's several, there's several thrifties in there?
Several thrifties in Shreveport, yes, sir.
Okay, and this legislation would affect all of those. So somewhere in the interim of the next two weeks, can you sort of provide what your business percentage is between 9:00 and closing on weekends and weekends, on weekends? Again, I appreciate the legislation because I think, I think we want to be fair, but at the same time, I don't think this is a one size fits all situation. Certainly within neighborhoods where it's proximity with houses to the extent that in my district, for instance, liquor stores is red in the neighborhood. This one, and I think yours is on main thoroughfares, and I think there's a distinct difference in that, but at the same time, I don't want to hinder, I wouldn't want to vote to hinder sales if it, if it's not warranted to maintain, you know, equity, but I'm still saying, but I still don't think all, look, God bless, should be held under one standard. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Flurry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tufts, I understand you're here concerning the hours, but you made a statement there that just really caught me, caught me here real, you was talking about you wouldn't have chosen that spot, but yet you have one right around there on Yuri Drive that's had numerous armed robbers.
Not numerous, sir, we actually...
Well, we can, I'll get the chief police up here and remind you that we have had, not this year, but the year before and the year before, I know of one that ran out and ran through the neighborhood over there. You've had numerous armed robbers and I still hold of that statement.
The last break-in that we had at that location, there were four gentlemen, I say gentlemen, there were four individuals out of Texas because of our security cameras and our alarm system in the stores. These people had been robbing the Yuri Drive corridor for, I don't know, if, this was several years ago, maybe a month. Were not caught until they broke into our location and the Shreveport police were able to abduct all four of them. I, like the sales figures, I do not have the exact time that store may have been robbed. You say armed robbery?
With guns.
Yes, sir, I understand, but as far as I believe in, knock on wood, it never happens again, but the break-in where the four individuals were arrested, I do not recall any armed robbery since then, which was several years ago. And prior to that, I can't give an exact time, I don't want to sit here and try to give exacts without knowing what my facts are, but it has been an extremely long time. We have no intention to be on a non-busy thoroughfare, we would rather be on a busy thoroughfare to avoid those types of things. Where some of our locations are now, the city itself has changed around where those locations are and that's not the case at most of them, but we are in business just like at McDonald's or Burger King or anybody else would be.
Well, I think this is something that Councilman Nicholson has brought forth, is not such a far-fetched idea because most armed robberies in the city of Shreveport occur at that timeframe and on into later at, after the 9:00, 9:00 PM and then also, we send out our DWI task force primarily in our, at that time of night because that seems to be when folks take a little nip and drive and so it's not too far-fetched to at least have the dialogue about the 9:00 PM closing. Cuban, I believe I heard last time, Cuban liquor closes somewhere 8:00. Lake Shore's required under their, if they go through and proceed at 9:00 and there you are out there all night long, huh?
No, sir, we close at midnight.
Midnight?
On Fridays and Saturdays and 10:30 Monday through Thursday.
Yeah.
And look, I agree with the dialogue and that's why I'm here, is to open up my opinion about the dialogue.
I find it so hard to believe that you're going to have to lay off folks when you've got signs in your business that say help wanted, so I don't know, maybe, maybe you've got a business model there that I just don't quite understand, but anyway, we need to have the dialogue and it's not going to hurt.
I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Green.
Yes, sir. Sir, I, this has nothing to do with rights and Russia, all I know is that Chick-fil-A is a national company, franchise, and they close on Sunday and it seems as though they've been blessed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I believe that's it, thank you, Mr. Tufts.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ron Heresy?
Hardy.
Excuse me, Hardy.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Ron Hardy, I live at 7 Tookey Hope Street. I'm here today to address a uncon, well, first let me say, I'm the property manager at 1243 Wood Street, which is a vacant area. I'm here to address the unconstitutional demolition of private property by city workers on October 14th. There was a citation issued, I believe around the 27th of July to, and this is a homeless camp, this is a camp where, and I don't, I don't probably have enough time to go into the dynamics of why we set the homeless camp up, but it was for citizens of this city and we can go into that dialogue later, why was it needed? But anyway, we must issue a citation, July 27th, to comply with some orders. We rented a porta potty for the people, we got a account from the city of Shreveport for water for the people, okay? And it was so, now Luther Cox is the owner of the property, I'm the property manager, so he was received a call or something that stated he should not have to come to the July, the August meeting of the, of the citation, so he didn't go. On October 14th, the property was demolished, we had private property, matter of fact, some homeless guys had bought tents, we have a land over there that was just demolished. And I'm trying to understand, you know, and maybe y'all can deal with that, how did this happen? I understand, we understand illegal delin, okay? Understand that very clearly, but we need to see where the city, who authorized anyone to come in there and destroy that private property? That's it.
Ms. Jones, will you assist this gentleman?
Sure. If you all need some more information, Mr. Green, can you give us some background on this, just so that you all can be aware of the facts concerning this?
This is the Oakland Street property, there was a set of departments across the street from this, from this camp or what have you. There were arrests made at the camp. Chief can fill you in on that. When we went out to the location, property was empty. There wasn't anybody there, no one was living there, we cleaned the property up. Mr. Cox owns a piece at the very back, the rest of it was adjudicated. We cleaned it all up because why would I leave a piece of some crates and whatnot out there? So there were, like I say, we had illegal activities that were going on there at the property and once it was cleared and no one was there, we cleaned the property up and I made the call.
Okay. All right, Councilman Bradford. You said there was illegal activities?
Yes.
I mean, where did that report come from? I mean, you got, okay, come on, chief, come on down.
Councilman, we received a complaint, I looked at the emails and can tell you it was from, I don't remember offhand, that there was possible drug dealing going on at this location and so made our narcotics division aware of it and they arrested two individuals, seized marijuana, methamphetamine and crack cocaine from that location. Approximately 20 grams of marijuana packaged for sale, 1.7 grams of methamphetamine packaged for sale and then crack cocaine also packaged for sale, so obviously distribution and using was going on at that location. So that was the police department's role.
Okay, and from that, from that report, you had authority to go in and dismount that, that area, that these young men?
That was on adjudicated property.
I'm sorry?
That was on adjudicated property. And when I got there, I talked to Mr. Cox, I didn't talk to, I didn't know anything about a...
Mr. Hardy.
Mr. Hardy being a...
Manager, yes, yes.
Yeah.
A manager.
But Mr. Cox did talk to MPC, he said, and was denied being able to put water, porta potties or what, basically set it up as a legitimate camp. So it was illegitimate from the get-go. Everything that they were trying to do, it wasn't legal to do.
Well, I attended a, an event at Mr. Hardy's business today, this, this week is National Negro in the Art Week recognition. And he put on a very wonderful event this morning at his place and he made, he started telling me about what they was trying to do, he and Mr. Cox was both there, and he was telling me that they were sympathetic to the homeless and to those that did not have stationary housing and they provided this, this, this place of residence for those , and he made me believe, and I believe him, that they went through all the proper procedures to get that place acceptable. Now, again, I'm, and I understand the other activities that could have happened there that it wasn't aware of, but the intent of them trying to provide decent and some type of stationary home comfort for, for, for those that don't have those, I thought it was a good thing. And, I'm sorry?
Mr. Cox must be playing both sides against the middle.
What do you mean both sides? What do you mean, what do you mean, what's that, it's not a game, what are you talking about?
I stood right in front when we were going to demolish and remove the stuff. Mr. Cox said, well, if they're not here, then I understand, do what you got to do.
You're aware of that, Mr. Hardy?
Sir, when Mr. Cox got there to place the demolition, when I got there, I got there about 8:00 Monday morning, just out in Quig Blue Sky, went around there, because I had heard about the illegal activities, there was a police there, so I wanted to see what was really going on. So I went around there that morning, I can show you pictures, this before Mr., the place was demolished. I mean, he said that, yeah, there's, there was a area that is adjudicated, the guys, we complied, they moved the camp back to Mr. Cox's property. This was an artistic piece, matter of fact, let me just say this to your city council, we was trying to set up a Airbnb homeless camp where people could come and maybe have the homeless experience if they didn't want to go to the fairgrounds where that was a, you know, that you guys are doing now, the fairgrounds with the homeless, some kind of boxes, no, we were going to get, we were setting up a artistic piece, it was an artistic camp. The guy that put the camp together, like I said, I really don't have enough time to talk about this, we can put it on paper like it's showing, this young man needed that kind of exposure and help from himself, but no, Mr. Cox was not there, they demolished the place before I got there.
Okay, the grounds are clear now, let me do this, if it's okay, let me, let me speak with Mr. Green and the chief, then I want to come back and speak with you and Mr. Cox and if there, see if there are any sites or any opportunities to provide the type of sensitivity that you were trying to provide for these young, for these people.
Can I interject one thing?
Sure, sure.
They destroyed private property. These were, these tents were built or put up on crates, they wasn't just on the ground, the guys got crates, put the tents so they could sleep in them and not be rained, we had a lot more, we had things over there. One of the guys that started the camp, he bought, he finally got his check from, okay, where he could have some money, he bought tents, they destroyed them, they...
So let me, again, Mr. Hardy, I feel you, I feel you, and I'm saying, let me, let me speak with the chief and with Mr. Green, if there was property damage or property that was destroyed and if there's liability to be leaned, then we need to look at that too. But I want to see, first of all, you know, how this happened and then I want to see if there is opportunity, then we'll talk to the proper departments to see if we can find somewhere we can do this, because I thought it was a good thing.
That's okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Flurry?
I withdraw.
Councilman Green?
I would say this, that...
Councilman Green, excuse me, one more to Mr. Hardy, Councilman Green?
Mr. Hardy?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say that once, once this is taken care of as to how Mr. Bradford is saying that he wants the chief and everybody to get involved to set it up correctly, I'll commit to buying a tent for whoever.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Let me say again, thank you for this morning, I thought it was a great program and you recognizing the variety of African, Negro art through the centuries, very impressive.
The camp is on the big picture with the projects, churches, chicken, LSU, the homeless camp is there, that is our...
Now, these exhibits going to be up for how long at your place?
They're open in the club, those pictures you saw, those are the original...
Now, I was going to invite the public to go by and look at that. What's that address over there? What's the address?
717 Hope Street, we're, you can see a majesty from T. Harris Cafe.
Yeah.
On the wall, on building wall.
Okay, yeah, I'm just asking, does anybody want to see?
I have sent invitations to everyone on that campus.
Yeah, the diversity and the, and the, really the involvement of black art was, is there, so go by and look at it, but I'll set up a time we can talk, okay? Thank you.
Councilman Bradford, you know, we, it's still some, we got laws too and they weren't on, that was on adjudicated property, it's the big picture.
No, I understand, I understand. Okay, all right. I'm just saying, when I was, when it was brought to my attention, it sounded very good that they, that people utilizing that campsite, okay? But we won't, we won't violate no laws or no...
No, I'm just saying, I know, I understand where Mr. Hardy is coming from and I, we do have a homeless problem, I get that, we get that and I wish it was more that we could do.
Okay.
But at the same time, we want to make sure that they understand that, you know, we got laws, I just can't go set up a camp on, with the Bradford's property, it's off, so... I just can't go set up a camp on, with the Bradford's property, it's, it's all, so, um, we don't, who's next?
Mr. Bev Francis.
Good afternoon, Councilor Bev Francis, one twelve East Pecan, San Antonio. Pleasure to see you again. We, I represent the SBA. And on tomorrow's, it's my understanding and respecting your request that there be minimum discussion further on this appeal. I reserve any questions and comments for tomorrow. I spoke briefly with Mr. Arson on the way in. I believe we have an agreement that will address our comments and questions on the three-minute time limit tomorrow. Tom, is that the agreement?
I, I don't plan to speak at all, but the council said unless you do, Mr. Francis.
Okay.
I look forward to seeing you tomorrow then. Thank you again.
Yes, sir. Thank you both. Very good. Mr. Chairman, those are all the requests, please. All right. Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, before we move forward with the legislation, Chief, Chief Raymond, can you, can I speak with you again one, one, one time over, please? I, I just need some understanding of what happened several weeks ago. No, this is something totally different. Several weeks ago, there was an accident on I-220, westbound between Jefferson Page and Lake Shore Drive. Eighteen-wheeler, I think, hit a pickup truck. You remember that situation? Believe I do. Okay, anyway, I guess it's... I'm sorry? Was it a fatality? No fatality. There was no fatality. But, but my point was that all traffic, all westbound traffic was deteriorated off of I-220 at Lake Shore Drive. The sheriff, I guess, it's parish area. So the sheriff deputies set up the exit apparatus, blocking off and directing and leading people onto Lake Shore Drive. And once they got on Lake Shore Drive, I mean eighteen-wheelers and everything else, they was lost. They, they didn't know what to do. They, they went down Curtis Lane, they went down Jefferson Page, they went everywhere. And I was wondering, in a situation like that, how, what would be the responsibility of Shreveport Police Department in helping direct traffic through the city? If, if all westbound traffic, all westbound traffic is deteriorated off of our interstate system, do, do we just let them vet for themselves? How, how's that, how do that work?
It would depend on the circumstances. Now, if we received calls that, you know, there was, there were traffic complaints or that...
Seven hours, it, it was closed for seven hours.
I, I have to check in the specific circumstances. I, I can't speak in generalizations, that if we're working a major accident on interstate, generally, we just try to keep the, the traffic off that particular accident scene. We don't have the personnel to set up a detour, so to speak. And that's not an excuse, maybe that's, maybe we should have. But I'd really have to check in the specifics as to why, especially if Caddo was working the accident scene, as to why we didn't assist with the issues off of interstate.
You understand what I'm asking?
No, I do, I understand.
Because it was, it was chaotic.
Yes, sir.
You know, and it went through residential areas and there was no sight of any police to help direct traffic back to the interstate, either I-220 or back to I-220.
No, I understand, I, I can find out, you know, specifically that instance.
Give me, what, what is...
We don't, we don't have a policy.
You don't have a policy on, on accidents if they exit the interstate?
No, sir. But, because, because again, generally, especially if the police are working it, most of our units are gonna be tied up on that accident. And so, our, our duty in that, or role in that particular instance is let's keep traffic away from accident scenes so we can clean it up, work the investigation, call them tow trucks, et cetera. And unfortunately, it, it would be somewhat up to those traveling that route to, to find another, another thorough way, so to speak. But, you know, brings up an important, important point, something I never thought about before, so we can start to look at some type of a policy. And I think it would depend on the location and how many units it would take to reroute that traffic. You know, if we, if we could get at one intersection and point people in the right direction, that's one thing. If we had to have officers at five or six intersections, we, we're not gonna have the personnel to do that.
No, I mean, wasn't that, and I got photos, I, I want, I want... Again, my concern was, it was a residential area. There was a light at the corner of Curtis Lane and Lake Shore. And that light is a quick light. If officer would have been at that light, at that location, direct, keeping traffic flowing, then that traffic would not have been backed up two miles back to the interstate. And I'm just saying, those situations would have, would have been helpful. And that's, and I'm just saying, situations where traffic is, all the traffic is detoured off of the interstate and, and a red light is holding them up for, you know, two minutes when they could be flowing, uh, would be helpful. And then, when they got down to maybe Jewella, they could have directed them back down to Jewella, back to the interstate. But they was going all which ways because they didn't know it was coming to the city.
I understand, very, very good point. And I, and I can check and then just, what would have probably solved the problem is if, is if somebody made a call, maybe the Caddo deputies said, hey, traffic's backing up, can we get some units to assist? Or perhaps it should have been upon us to go by there and, and check and assist. But I'll find out what happened.
Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Councilman Bradford, I, I understand, I think we understand the concern that you have, especially for the timeframe. It makes sense, you know, for there's some, to be some further thought down the road on what's going on as far as traffic is concerned and making sure that there is not any chaos. So, we'll talk and we'll get with staff to see, you know, to what we're doing right now to make sure that we address those types of things. Because I could see how that could create some issues throughout the city in those circumstances. So we'll definitely talk through that and address it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right. Consent items to, to be adopted, Ms. Jones?
Resolution one twenty-seven exempting the public dedication of Ash Street and Sagewood Circle Rites of Way and Sagewood Place subdivision, unit four.
Okay. No discussion on that, and well to regular agenda legislation.
Resolution one twenty-six is approving the 2020 Downtown Development Authority Program of Work. Resolution one twenty-eight is amending resolution number seventy-two of 2018 and to approve Calumet Shreveport Refining LLC for participation in the industrial tax exemption program located at project site thirty-three thirty-three Midway Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh nine. Resolution one twenty-nine recognizing Project Celebration for its work to prevent and to assist the victims of domestic violence to support Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
All right, Lieutenant Carrillo.
Yes, I just wanted the council to be aware, we received an email through the administration with officials from Calumet. There was a, a name change for the organization. And in order to facilitate what was derived in the existing resolution, we needed to change the name to reflect their current business name. So that is the only change to that resolution that was passed in 2018. No other, no subsequent changes have been made.
Change, okay. All right, Councilman Flure.
In regards to resolution one twenty-eight, uh, how did, did, did we not use the formula that we used before on calculating, are they wanting this full eight hundred and eighty something thousand?
It, it is exactly the same resolution as before, the only difference is a name change.
Please turn it on, I...
Got you, thank you, Mr. Thompson.
All right. No discussion, Ms. Jones, introduction of resolution?
Resolution one thirty is authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Shreveport Bossier Convention and Tours Bureau. Resolution one thirty-one is authorizing the use of certain equipment by Support Spectrum Race Management. Resolution one thirty-two stating the City of Shreveport's endorsement of Twin Oaks Investments LLC to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program. Resolution one thirty-three authorizing the mayor to accept a donation of real estate with improvements located at twenty-nine sixteen Fulton Street in as-is condition with an estimated value of twenty thousand dollars from Wells Fargo National Bank to be utilized by community development for homeownership or rental to low, to a low to moderate income home buyer or tenant.
There's no discussion on that. And Ms. Jones, proceed, introduction of ordinance, please.
Ordinance one sixty is amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance one sixty-one is amending chapter ten, article four, division two, section ten dash one seventy-five of the Code of Ordinances regarding hours of operation for retail dealer of alcohol non-downtown zoning districts. Ordinance one sixty-two amending chapter ten, article two, division four, section ten dash eighty-two of the Code of Ordinances regarding sales of alcohol near homes, schools, churches, et cetera. Ordinance one sixty-three is authorizing an encroachment into the city's public right-of-way located near thirty-one fifty Artist Taylor Drive. As more fully described herein, to authorize the mayor or his designated to execute an encroachment permit with Southern Hills Neighborhood Association. Ordinance one sixty-four authorizing the mayor to execute three cooperative endeavor lease agreements with city-owned property located in Let Better Heights, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh one, in Caddo Parish to one or more entities managed or controlled by the Housing Authority of the City of Shreveport or its subsidiaries for the development or the Bayou Grand Housing Initiatives for purposes which benefit the, the public. Ordinance one sixty-five is zoning case number nineteen dash three eighty-seven dash C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code for rezoning property located approximately one thousand and six hundred feet west of Pines Road and three hundred feet south of Jefferson Page Road, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from RE Residential Estate District to R-two multifamily, multifamily residential district.
Mr. Chairman. On ordinance one sixty-five, it was denied by the MPC. Before we had the UDC, if an ordinance or, or a, was denied by the MPC, it would only come to the council if it was on appeal. Now, all of the ordinances come to the council. So there is no way on the agenda to know whether or not it was approved by or denied by the MPC. So I just wanted to let you know that this one was denied by the MPC, but it comes to the council anyway. And, uh, we need to try to find a way to put on the agenda some notation to let you know that information.
Okay. All right. So, it's an appeal from the, from, from those?
It's not an appeal. Whether it's approved or denied by the MPC under the UDC, it comes to the council.
So... I need some clarification, Art, I'm, I'm not following it. So i- if it was denied by the MPC...
It still comes to the council.
All right, and what, what if we approved it?
Then it's approved.
So, uh...
But I think you need to know...
Chairman, I mean, you're, you're author of this legislation on there?
Well, it's in my district.
Do you speak to it at this time or is there other way?
No, it's, um, the guy wanted to rezone some, like, five, almost six acres of this property. I don't know if you remember behind, uh, Brookshire. And, uh, yeah, the, the residents don't, it's, it's not coincide with what's already there. So...
So, you, you would have us reject it?
Please.
Yeah, okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I, I concur with, with the clerk in that the actions and, I mean, they got the resources and apparatus to, and they also had public hearing to, to get, to reap, you know, the, the feedback from the, from the neighbors and from the community. And I'm sure we've heard of this, this, this item. So there need to be some identification on the action that was taken versus just a generic description of what, what it, what it is. So, Mr. Clark, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we, I mean, discussion, you, you heard the discussion regarding this, this particular ordinance that automatically came to us. And action from this body is necessary. We, we was not all privy to the overall, uh, public input and hearings that you, that you had or from your staff. Is there any way, do the council need to make some type of modification that when, when this, when these type of, uh, UDC matters come back to us, that they can be identified in a way or more information could be given as far as the, the actions of your, of your MPC body?
I just had this discussion earlier with Mr. Thompson. We were looking at, at the situation, uh, when the Unified Development Code was enacted, all map amendments come before the council, being that you are the legislative branch of city government and you have the options of confirming the decision of the MPC, reversing decision or making modifications to the decision. So, we feel very comfortable with it. Mr. Thompson was not as comfortable as we are because you have that opportunity when these, uh, when these, uh, issues are brought before the city to make those final determinations.
No, I, I agree that. And, and I'm saying, and I don't know, tomorrow we may be, um, Mr. Chairman, we may have, get the people in here like they had at the church that night.
I would hope not.
Hope not? I mean, if they, if they feel like this body is gonna, is gonna do something against their wishes. But, but, but I was just, I seen, and I, and I can get with the clerk, is that it would be a note, somewhere a note would be a part of just saying, this, this is a, uh, forwarded, this has been forwarded to the body to, to make a decision. And then MPC recommendation would be yes, no, or whatever.
And Councilman Bradford, the MPC staff and the MPC board is perfectly in agreement with you. This just came up today and we became aware of it. And we will work with the council and the clerk's office, if it is so inclined to work with us, to come up with a solution to this problem.
So, my last question is, so, so I, I'm, I'm fully aware of the public, uh, position on this? And, and, and they expressed that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Was that your staff reasoning for rejecting it? Or was there any other information that was shared that, that made you, made the MPC rejecting this, this, this application?
The staff recommendation was based on the fact that all of the property on both sides of Jefferson Page Road, on the north and south, were single-family residential and zoning districts. And this was a multifamily zoning application. And we found that jumping from the residential estate zoning classification to the R-two multifamily was quite a leap and was not compatible with the other development in the area. It had nothing to do with the, uh, the sentiments, uh, the concerns of the big groups that spoke out in opposition.
I see. Thank you, sir. All right. Chief.
Councilman Green.
Mr. Thompson, would it be a problem if, say, for an instance, it has ordinance one sixty-five, just for us to have a notation, after one sixty-five, could we just put UDC?
Or denied by UDC?
Yes, sir.
We'll, we'll look at that.
Yes, sir, and that would help us.
All right. And I know that, um, well, I didn't know if, if, if Mr. Settle, I know Mr. Settle was the spokesperson, a consultant for the gentleman who was applying. So, I don't know if you had some additional information that you wanted to, or that you could off on that?
John Settle, I, I did represent David Sample in Roanoke, or whatever the name is, at the MPC. We were soundly thrashed. He did not bother to fear, and I took all the bullets. He is not appealing to you. And he was surprised it was on the agenda, but I explained to him that it had to come to you. So we're expecting the council to uphold the MPC. And I'm not sure how you're gonna, your resolution read, but we do not expect you to overturn the MPC tomorrow. He's making other plans for a development.
Right. Adam?
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Jones, ordinance on seven, we're gonna file a passage, please.
Ordinance one twenty-three authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor lease agreement with, of city-owned property located at fifteen oh six Abbey Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh three in Caddo Parish, to the Serenity Club of Shreveport, Inc., for the purpose of less see to use it for programs and to maintain the building and grounds. Said property is not needed for public purposes. Ordinance one thirty-five and ordinance amending the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance one thirty-six and ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the MPC Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance one thirty-seven is amending the 2019 general fund budget... Ordinance one thirty-seven is amending the two thousand nineteen general fund budget. Ordinance one thirty-eight is amending chapter thirty-eight Housing and Property Standards of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances. Ordinance one thirty-nine and ordinance to establish a new chapter thirty-eight point five procedures for abatement for the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances.
Okay, there any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I will mention, I would say on one twenty-three, I, I think, um, we got a very detailed, uh, description of, of how this property is utilized. It has been, um, engaged in a cooperative endeavor agreement for the last twelve years, and now we just asking that the same agreement will be transferred to the Serenity Club, who has been utilizing it even during that time. The, the church, the Magnolia Church that was using it, uh, several years ago, uh, outsourced the use of it to them, and, but they have maintained the building. We went over and looked at the building, the equipment, everything is, is just top-notch. Mr. Keneese was here at the last work session and expressed his appreciation to how that's being utilized. So I just wanna say that I, I would certainly want and expect for us to continue to make these type of accommodations to, to buildings and to, uh, uh, entities that, that can partner with us to lessen the financial obligation that we have on some of, uh, some of our buildings, or some of the programs that we support throughout this city. So, I just wanted to say that again, thank you.
All right, Councilman Flure.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna commend city staff for their work on ordinances one thirty-eight and one thirty-nine. This will, uh, implement the property standards court that has been subject to some discussion over the past several months, and I do think it will improve the city's ability, uh, to address property standards violations. Thank you.
I can ask about that later, okay. On the, uh, ordinances to be adopted, no later than December fifteenth, the resolution for the budget?
Under section ten is tabled legislation. These are the twenty ordinances for the twenty, for the adoption of the twenty twenty budget.
Okay. Mr. Thompson, any table legislation to be removed?
Uh, now that we know of it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No property standards appeals considered today, no ABO. We have the following eight, uh, MPC appeals tomorrow.
Yes, we have one MPC appeal, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And no other appeals. We did have a Mr., was it Lawrence Anderson? Will he be here tomorrow?
Shreveport Boesger Commission, I'll find out.
Okay.
Okay, I don't, I don't think he's here today, but we'll make sure that he's here tomorrow.
Okay. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committee?
His place is Mr. Anderson taking?
Uh, Zazaya Dedy, on the sports commission. And Mr. Thompson, is there a clerk's report?
We do have one appointment letter from the mayor, um, to be confirmed, uh, later is Shreveport Boesger Sports Commission, and the person appointed is Mr. Lawrence Anderson.
Okay. He should be here tomorrow.
And we do have an executive session.
All right. Directly after today?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Coriel?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just reading through something. Okay, do we have a motion, uh, to go into executive?
Before we go into motion, I understand we're having employees', uh, recognition day, um, what day is that?
Thirty first. October the thirty-first, as employee.
October the thirty-first, and from my understanding, we are supposed to have, from the council, supposed to give some door prizes, and I just wanna know how we're supposed to go about doing it. Do we just all put the money in the pot, or, or what kind of direction do we supposed to have for that?
Yeah, the, the mayor's task force and HR has asked each department to offer door prizes to be offered at employee appreciation, appreciation, um, day on October the thirty-first, so it's up to the council, um, you know, on what you all are willing to offer.
Ms., Ms., uh, Terry, excellent, Ms. Terry. You can give yours to Ms. Terry.
No, I was gonna ask, that councilwoman Fuller would take care of us up here, we'd give it to her, and she'd give it to Ms. Terry. She'll set the standards on what we need to pay, or what we need to do.
Uh, what are you planning on giving?
It, I, it all depends on what she asks us to do.
That's cute. I don't understand it. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna act like I don't understand. That sounds, that sounds like you're making extra work for me.
Your suggested financial adjustments, right? Haven't you suggested?
Mr. Chairman, we'll, we'll do something on that.
So the council, the council board would coordinate us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Get that kid no extra work, man.
I heard that. I heard that.
I need a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I think the, uh, ordinance, the statutes require us to read off what we're going into executive session for, so if the motion would include to go into executive session, to consider the following matters, uh, Erica W. Early versus Veronica Camp, docket number six oh three seven oh eight, all of these are in the First Judicial District Court of Caddo Parish, Louisiana. The second is B.W. Partners LLC DBA Prior Wood Apartments versus City of Shreveport, docket number six one three six eight one dash A. Sherwood Lakes Apartments LLC versus the City of Shreveport, docket number six one six eight two one C. The Haven Property Owners Association, Inc., versus City of Shreveport, docket number six one zero five three zero dash C. And T. Scott Bernice Michael Jones and Mark DeFatta individually and on behalf of a class of similarly situated persons versus the City of Shreveport, docket number five nine nine six nine eight dash C.
All right, we had a motion by Councilman Green.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nick. There's nothing else in this meeting we'll go into, uh, this meeting is adjourned. I'm sorry. Motion carries with itself?
Uh, the meeting is not adjourned. This is a part of the meeting, we'll come back in here.
Right. This meeting is...